Good to be with the needle skinners again, and you said five minutes, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's a long time in this kind of setting.
Yeah.
Well, my name is Nick Foster. I've lived in Columbia since 2010. And have lived in the fourth ward since we moved here. We moved here from Indiana. My wife Candace came here to take a position with the College of Education and now Human Development at the University of Missouri where she teaches. She just recently was promoted, by the way. She's now the Associate Provost for Faculty Success, and I'm very proud of her. Of course, when she came, I wanted to come with her as much as we loved Bloomington, Indiana. We found ourselves at home in Columbia. And we lived in the south, the far southwestern portion of the ward when we first moved here. And then some years later, we moved to where we, where we are now. So we're in the far northeastern corner of the ward. So I've come to know the ward pretty well in all that time. I've also come to know the city well primarily through my work at Voluntary Action Center. When I moved here, I had been most previously in nonprofit work at a Habitat for Humanity affiliate in Martinsville, Indiana, just north of Bloomington in Morgan County. So there I gained a lot of experience in those two years with that organization, an outstanding organization that I've always admired and was grateful for the opportunity to work with directly. When I moved here, I was looking for an opportunity with nonprofits and another leadership position. Along the way, people suggested, a number of people suggested I talk to Cindy Mustard. And I, to be honest, I had become aware of fact, but I didn't want to bother Cindy, but so many people kept saying it to me. I did go to see her. So she was very gracious and gave me an idea for another job in town that I did apply for. I ended up not getting that job. I was one of the I was one of two finalists in that position. But as it turned out, a little over a year later, Cindy had announced her retirement and I applied for that job and I was again in Cindy's office and we were making the transition from her to me. I very much appreciated back and the work that it does and continues to do and recognized that I had a role in stewardship in that position. So while I was there for over nine years, I really came to understand the city, to know the people of our city, the concerns of the city and how things work here. Of course, I was very involved with nonprofits in the city. I still am. But I also was involved really directly and intimate ways with the for-profit business community, with education in our community, with organizations like this one. And so I came to understand the city well. In the, at the end of 2020, I retired. One of the main reasons I retired was, and you may have seen me looking down, my eight-year-old or my now nine-year-old daughter was down here trying to get my attention. As daughters do, even on Zoom. So I I wanted to retire in large part because of her. I immediately retired into a schoolroom because we were having virtual school at our house. My daughter and another friend of hers, Monday through Friday. So that was pretty much my job and my focus. But I did begin to do some consulting with nonprofits in the community and bring my skills to work for some of them. Then in the fall, I learned that Ian Thomas was not going to run. Some of you, I'm sure, received the same email I did. And I immediately thought, well, that's interesting. I had had thoughts of running for office before, but I have never done it before and frankly could not have done it while I was at back. That job was very consuming. But I appreciated Ian and his work, his values, and began to talk to my wife about it immediately. And then the next morning, we got a text from some friends who said, we think that Nick should run. So I invited them over. We sat down and talked and I decided to, after that, to focus with some conversations with other friends in the community and began to have conversations with them. And over about a 10-day period, finally came to the decision that I would run for the office. I, wow, that passed quickly. I'm running because I feel like I have the skills and the understanding of the city. I have a passion for the city and its people. And I want to give my skills and my experience to that work. My life has been a life of service. It will continue to be a life of service in one way or another. And public service is where I want to take myself next in my life's work. Thanks very much.
Okay, you see it goes faster than I think. All right. Erica, it's your turn now.
Hello, everyone. I am Erica Pefferman. Thank you for inviting me today to join your meeting. I'm, I always start with a mother of five. I'm not sure if it's because the five children always seems to impress people or scare them. But it was also a biggest part of the work I've done in my life is raising five children. They're 23, 21, 20, 19, and almost 14. My, my baby will be 14 next week. I am a business owner. I own Como Magazine and Columbia Marketing Group. Our offices are located right down here in the district. And we're a sponsor of True Falls, which is where I'm headed immediately after this. And I also, as, as Nick had talked about, being a person of service, I've dedicated a lot of my time to public service. I've been on the, am on the board of CASA, Heart of Missouri CASA right now. The Allstate Alzheimer's Association Board, I'm Chair of the Walk Here to End the Walk to End Alzheimer's was last year and is, and this year as well. Spent seven years on the Board of Jobpoint, which I'm extremely passionate about. I love talking about how getting people to work can, can lift them out of poverty and change family trees. I get really, really passionate and excited about that. Was on the Board of United Way for several years, Women's Network, the Chamber of Commerce, Rainbow House. And I am currently also on the Board of Columbia College School of Business, which I enjoy having some input into curriculum and things over there at the school. And I would say, one of the things that has prepared me for this and given me my passion kind of answers to questions of like, why are you running? And, and what do you know that might make you qualified for this? And through the Chamber of Commerce, we have taken, some of you may be familiar with it. There's a trip called Leadership Visit. And for the last seven years, I've been on a trip where we go to cities that are aspirational to Columbia in some way. And for about two and a half days, we work on learning from their city and their organizations, how they deal and we, with issues. And we've done everything from airports and public transportation, town and gown relationships, racial issues. All the social issues are always, I think, the most engaging sessions. We've done development. We've done, you know, tax, how to finance different things within the city. Affordable housing last year was, I think, our biggest takeaway from Athens, Georgia. Innovation, different things as far as helping support businesses and revitalizing areas of the city. There's just been so many topics that we've worked on over the last seven years. And so in the course of doing that and traveling and spending my, my time and financial resources to go, it has really given me an opportunity to dive deep on a lot of different topics as it relates to what the City Council faces and to what our city faces. And then, of course, through the magazine, you know, we're always trying to be relevant and write about issues that, that face our city every day. My, my job, the way that I see it, is to make sure that Columbia knows the stories of the cool, you know, people that are doing cool things. And that includes all, all of our people, you know. And so we really work hard utilizing our advisory board and just the people within our network to reach out and make sure that we're telling new stories about people that and, and issues that people might not always be aware of. So, and again, through writing those, I have a chance to, to write about, you know, some of these same issues. And so that's been something I've been passionate about for a long time. I've wanted to run for many years. Like, it was never really the right time because my kids are little. And because I was, you know, really starting to, you know, early parts of owning my own company. But now the time is good because, as Nick mentioned, you know, the seat is open. There's no incumbent. And we both have a good 50/50 shot at it. And we, you know, with my business, it being a good time, I used to teach at Stevens as an adjunct there. And I resigned that opportunity to make room in my schedule for this, as well as my staff here has done a good job making room for this time in my life as we move forward. So I really appreciate you guys inviting me today. The three things that I really want to talk about the most, I hope I get questions on, are affordable housing, job development within Columbia, and our safety, you know, our crime issues and our public safety. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're open for questions. Now, you don't feel, don't feel obligated to steal up the entire two minutes if the answer is a simple yes or no. Okay. But you have full two minutes to answer the question. Hopefully, our people will ask the questions within a 30-second timeframe. Are there any questions? And the press is welcome to ask questions too. Hold up your hand or there's a little hand icon you can get. Do I see anything? This is not like you all. Did I? Did I alienate you? Pardon me?
My question is, this is Kathy Jensen, and I'll ask a softball question, which is, what is each of their positions on the school bond issue?
Okay, Erica, you're first this time.
Yeah, so I think it's pretty easy for everyone to agree that the city with the best schools wins. You know, that was one of the big takeaways from the Knoxville trip was how important, you know, at public education, excelling and being fully resourced was really important to their success as a city. And there's no way that I would not support something that was helpful to the school district. So I, I think, I'm a big fan of public education. I think we've had, we have great schools. And I think that as we continue to look at, how can we give them more of what they need, when they need it, so that we can continue to excel, especially at the markers that are really looked at? Yeah, I definitely support the, the school bond.
Okay. And Mr. Foster?
Yes, of course, I support the bond issue. One of the things that, that we're really facing is what we do in terms of education in the community. We're a growing community. And one of the things I've seen, and I've lived in a number of places, would never have expected that growing up, that I would have lived in seven states and been able to watch each one of them and observe them up close over that period of time. But everywhere I've lived, one of the biggest challenges is maintaining a school system that's going to meet the, the needs of the community as, as it grows. So yeah, I'm always looking to the school boards as to whether or not they are paying attention to what's coming up down the road, whether or not they're looking for the kind of property that's going to be needed to construct the church, the schools that we're going to need in, in the times coming up. So yes, I do support it. And it rare to never is the school bond issue I'm not in support of.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? I could ask another issue that's on the ballot. What about use tax? What do you think of that? And we'll start with this time, Mr. Foster.
I'm in support of the use tax, also known as the wayfare tax. It's a matter of fairness, for one thing. I think it's another thing that would eliminate some barriers for local businesses in particular. And, you know, I'm a big supporter of local business. I make a point of shopping local as much as possible. So this is another thing that will be helpful. It's not a new tax, and I think that's really important to know. And the state of Missouri, I believe, is the last state to come on board with putting this into place and has agreed to collect the tax. So we're in a really good position with that. I've asked one or two people about the language of the tax on the ballot. And apparently it's in a better, the language is better this time around rather than the, the problem we had last time with that. So I look forward to this happening. I'm going to continue to promote it myself as, as a supporter.
Good. Thank you. All right, Ms. Pefferman?
Yeah, I think this one's an easy guess as well. You're, in fact, we've been on enough forums already. All the candidates are in support of this. And this is something that does need to pass. And it is, I think the name is a little misleading because the city of Columbia has already approved a 2% sales tax that is collected when anybody shops local. So the use tax is more of a, a collection mechanism to collect that same 2% from people that buy online. And the important thing to remember, and I think people that are unsure of how this works, just to remind them that you'll never, you'll never be double taxed. You'll never pay both, both sets of taxes. You'll either pay a local 2% sales tax, or you'll pay the 2% tax if you purchase something online. And that additional revenue is, is estimated to be around $5 million on the conservative side. And that money will go directly into the general fund, which then will be used to help finance the issues that the City Council chooses to budget and allocate their funds to, which can be a lot of different things. And especially, in my opinion, more, you know, when we look at 60%, the general fund goes to safety, making sure that we have enough firefighters and appropriate training and recruitment for police officers. And crime is such a big topic here. So I just see no downside to this. That definitely needs to pass, and I hope you tell all your friends.
Thank you. Now, I do see Al Plummer's hand is up. Al?
Yes, thank you, Leslie. My question is related to leadership in the city of Columbia. Do you see a lack of diversity? And if so, what would you do to correct it?
Okay, this time, Ms. Pefferman is the first to answer.
I mean, yeah, I think that that's an easy, also, yes, I think there is a lack of diversity in a lot of different ways. I look at our police department and I see a lack of diversity within the ranks there. I see a lack of diversity across the board. And I think that, from what I can gather, they are making strides to, to address that by hiring a DEI director, by putting training in place, by doing different things. I personally think, I'm a big fan of Grow Your Own and recruitment. And I know the CPS has the Grow Your Own program that we've written about before, where students, minority students are given full ride scholarships at, I think Stevens and Col- I know it's Stevens, but I think it's Columbia College as well, as in exchange for committing to teach here at Columbia for a specific set of years. And I think there's a lot of ways for us to do that and a lot of different skill sets within the city that are needed. There are 204 open positions. And so when we start looking at how do we get creative and innovative with our recruitment, obviously diversity and include equity and inclusion has to be a part of that conversation. And I think we can do that by being really purposeful about how we, how we recruit. We can be purposeful about how we, where we, even if we're finding kids through the Career Center and scholarshiping and to the different trade skills that we need, getting their certifications and just ways that it make it easier to do both. You know, if we need diversity and we need to hire, that could be a really interesting way to look at that.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Foster?
I want to be sure I've got the question right. Can you, can you go ahead and just repeat that for me? It's, it's just, it's about.
Well, the, the question was focusing on leadership. Do you see a lack of diversity? And how would you go about improving it?
Well, you know, when I, I mentioned that I had some friends that reached out and suggested that I run and encouraged me to run. And when they came over to talk with me, they had already talked about me with some other people and said to me, well, you have two problems, Nick. And I said, I'm an old white guy. They said, yeah. And said, and you don't have enough melatonin in your skin. I said, that's right. He said, and there's nothing you can do about those two things. That's certainly true. But I'll tell you that I have given a lot of work personally to this issue over the past couple of years in particular to learn about what, what I need to know in terms of addressing equity in our community and really all across the country, to learn about my position, my opportunities to address that. And I have a commitment to it. So one of the things that I'm encouraged by is that we're beginning to see, and this is especially true, I think, among Democrats, as you know, that we're seeing younger and more diverse candidates coming to the front to run and to present themselves. And so that's something that needs to happen. That's an indication that we need to develop the kind of leadership that we want in this way. I'm really grateful for, that we hired, who we hired as our new city manager. And he will bring a, a new perspective and, and an important perspective to that as well. As, as Erica mentioned, the hiring of a director of a, an office of diversity, equity, and inclusion is among the things that he's responsible for right now, as well as all those open positions. So as those opportunities arise to hire to there, that'll be really important to do too. Beyond that, I want to say that I think it's really important that we encourage a general sense of participation on the part of our residents as a whole, so that they appreciate the opportunity that they all have, to have input into what's going on in the city, and then find their ways into places of leadership as a result of that.
I realize I had an alarm on, on. All right. Well, the next question, Alice.
Uh, thank you both for choosing to run for this office. My question has to do with working towards sustainability, energy efficiency, working with the rental community. I was able to, I'm a Sierra Club member, seeing Nick's position on many of these issues. But Erica chose to not fill out the Sierra Club questionnaire, so I'm interested in her positions on these issues. They're really important to, they're really important to our future. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, well, Erica will be answering after Nick. This time it's Nick's turn. Just Nick, Nick gets to start now. All right, Nick?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Alice. And climate change and addressing climate change is one of the top four issues that I want to address and has been raised in my campaign. You'll be familiar with my responses to the Sierra Club's questionnaire, of course. But among the things that we're facing are a need to move more quickly than we had originally anticipated through the Climate Action and Adapt Ad- Adaptation Plan to move to 100% renewables in terms of the city's use of, of power. So I do support that. I have some concerns about it in terms of its cost to certain groups within the city, especially folks who are of low wealth. But I'm really grateful for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I'm also, among the things I'm grateful for there are, is one, that there is a commission in place and those who put the plan together had the foresight to set that commission up so that they can oversee the implementation of the plan, which I think has pretty good support, broad support. So I would look to the commission, to their reports, to their recommendations, if I'm on City Council, to highly inform what, what we do moving forward. Also, equity is at the forefront of that plan. And I'm especially grateful for that. I think that if we can address these kinds of issues, and this issue and others, in a way that meets the needs and is sensitive to folks of, who are on the more, on the margins. People, if we can become more equitable with this, we're going to solve the problems that we have for everyone across the board. So those are the things that are upfront for me. And this is a personal issue for me. I, I'm significantly concerned about it. And if you ask younger people about it, it is desperately important to them. And so we need to be listening to them and responding because of them.
Stupid thing. Well, all right. Now, Ms. Pefferman, it's your turn.
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you for this question, Alice. I actually did spend a great deal of time talking about this on the forum that PeaceWorks and Sierra Club had, I think we just had that last week, or was it earlier this week? They all run together. But we spent a lot of time talking about this. And I too am incredibly supportive of protecting our resources and becoming energy efficient, helping follow this plan. But I have really grave concerns as it relates to the timeline being more it appears to me that to some people that hitting the timeline may be more important than not impose, like imposing really a hard hardship of onto the lowest income brackets that we have in our city. And even if we push those onto the rental owners, those will have to be absorbed at some point, which I fear would incur higher rents and have an even bigger problem, people being able to afford what we already have is a dire shortage of affordable housing. Now, what I am in favor of is, okay, if this is the plan, and it is, it's something that Columbia has spoken on, that we all feel very, very strongly that we accomplished, then we have to put the money, our money where our mouth is and invest resources to help make this happen. And there's a lot of different ways that that can happen and, or be funded. And so my, my responses during the forum were that we should provide incentives. I, as a business owner, have been incentivized to take advantage of the rebate program for the city to make my offices more efficient. When we remodeled our last office building, we did that. I invested in that and our utilities went down and we got a rebate. There is, is a win-win for all parties involved. And I think looking at that process and really promoting the communications of why it's important and really pushing the incentives for everyone to be able to participate in it so that it doesn't become a burden to those that just can't afford the additional money to make the improvements.
Okay, thank you. Let's see here, we, how about Scott Crystal?
All righty. What I'm curious about is more of a long-term view of where you would like Columbia to end up or to go over the next, and what you are going to do to guide it in that particular path. Does that, is that question too general, or is that enough of a specific for y'all?
We'll find out.
It works for me.
Ms. Pefferman, you start this time.
I, I love, love this question, Scott, because I, I'm a dreamer and I, I'm an idealist as well, which I'm gonna find out how well that works in politics. I, I really love the potential of Columbia, first of all, is a wonderful city. I literally am in love with the city. Both my businesses are named after Columbia. My office is in the heart of the city. I love it. And so when I look at our city, I look that we do have opportunities, like any family, any community, there's always going to be things we can improve on. And I see our opportunity to grow in some really cool ways, not just physically. Just this morning, I'm on the Leadership Visit Planning Committee. And we were planning our next city that we're going to go to. We were talking about the issues that we really wanted, that we thought were important to, to look at. One of the main topics that we discussed that was important was how do we convince people to stay here or move here? You know, we have so many people that come to our university that we have this brain drain where people come here, they get educated and they leave. We have 6,000, 6,500 jobs right now in our city. They're open and can't be filled. And we don't have those people, even our current people looking for jobs right now, there's only 2,300. So you still have this massive gap in human capital. So when I think about what I dream for Columbia is working on a public transportation system that is robust, I want, I want to talk about revising the UDC so we can have, develop in the city, up and anywhere else that makes sense, provide housing for people. I love the fact that we have such a robust educational community here. We have festivals. Columbia has a lot going on for it. The things that we need to work on are, are social issues. You know, we need to work on the culture within the city staff and council. We need a safer city, and that's going to go directly back to the police. So there's, there's a lot of things that we, that we can do, but I'm going to continue to invest my time and resources in these trips to learn more and bring it back to Columbia.
Um, okay, Mr. Mr. Foster, there you are. Okay.
Well, that is a very broad question, Scott. I think that there are a number of things I hope to see. Columbia is a great town. I think that one of the things that people are concerned about is that as we grow, and we're going to grow, I haven't had anybody to tell me yet that they don't think that's going to continue to happen. It is going to happen. The question is, how are we going to do it? Are we going to be smart about the manner in which we grow? And of course, that's about population. But as we're, we're growing, we want to maintain a sense of the character of the city that we love. So I think there are certain things that are in place right now that are going to continue to be happening. For instance, there is a West Development Plan that is in process. And one of the things that I've said in response to that, that is, I, I hope that as people are developing that West Plan, that they keep in mind a couple of things. One, that they make for walkable neighborhoods, bikeable neighborhoods, that they provide amenities for the people who live there so that they don't have to make long trips into town to do the things that they need to do or want to do. And that they consider transportation. I, I believe we need to have a robust, a robust transportation system in this town. That's been an area of frustration for a number Uh, that's been an area of frustration for a number of, well, as long as I've lived here, I've heard frustration about our bus system and transportation. I I believe that we need to be aspirational about that and provide a a public transit. System that is adequate and meets the needs of everyone in the city. But then beyond that, and so I, we need to be thinking area-wide about that. I'm concerned about public safety. I'm concerned that we hire the police that we want to hire and we resource them in the way we uh they need to be and that we. Know what we're asking of them to do. Uh, and mental health, we need a mental health crisis center, and I believe there's an opportunity for that. Then I hope somebody will ask again about housing. This is especially important to me. We need adequate and affordable housing for everyone across the income spectrum in our community, and I have real ideas about that.
Um, let's see here, David had his, either David or Carol had their hand up for a long time.
Thanks, re- David. Uh, my question has to do with the increase, or at least perceived increase. And violence, specifically gun violence in the city. Do you agree that this this is an issue needs to be addressed? And if so, what do you see uh the city can do to address the issue?
Mr. Foster.
I was distressed, as we all were a few weeks ago, when there was a young girl, fifteen-year-old battle student, who was shot while in her bed in her, at her home. And. Her name is Aubrey Doxley. And when there was a memorial service for her, her mother talked about the her experience that night and hearing gunfire. She didn't think anything of it. It was a common experience. Uh, and she didn't think anything of it until she discovered her daughter. Uh, this morning I was at a press conference for uh with United Community Builders. United Community Builders held a press conference to announce that they're receiving a million dollars from the Veterans United Foundation. To construct a a center in the northeast part of town and um. It it's very exciting. And when I taught the folks from Veterans United, we agreed that we feel like we're at a place in our city where there are a number of things that are just about to happen. Uh, the need has always been there, but now there is the opportunity to address them in meaningful ways. Uh, among the things that I heard it this morning is that. The closest uh uh playground for children in that and that community is one point seven miles away. That's a shocking thing to hear in a city that takes so much pride in our Parks and Recreation Program. Uh, there are plans for addressing that uh that are on on the books, and so hopefully we'll see that addressed soon. But that center is going to be a part of it, and it means that all of our community needs to come together to address it. I think that very often when some, when violence happens downtown, we all feel violated because we id- we identify with downtown. And rightly so, I I love being downtown. But violence is taking place in other parts of our city. And especially in the northeast part, and we need to be as concerned about that as anywhere else. We need to address the root causes of this violence. Poverty and a lack of employment and and a lack of education that's adequate to people's needs. Um, as to whether or not it's it's the perception is um. Is accurate, David, it's real, and we need to be responsive to it.
Well, all right, Ms. Pepperman? I lost you. Oh, there you are.
Still here. Um, yeah, thank you for the question, David. It's a great question. Uh, I I think it's something that we. We all think about and and. As a mother, I just am horrified every time I hear that story over and over. Um, being downtown, it's not, it's hard to miss, you know, that it does seem to come down here. We were at a forum where it was discussed. Not too long ago that often these things start in other parts of the city and then end up downtown. And and I think. Perception is reality. I mean, some people will tell you, looking at the data, that it's. That violent crime, depending on how you slice and dice it, isn't up or it's down in these areas, but it doesn't matter. Because perception is reality in our community is scared, and we are having things that are not acceptable happen in our community. So. Um, so the answer to your question is, I do think it is something that's important. It is something that's that needs to be addressed. And I think that when people are stressed. With their back against the wall, when it comes to being able to have a home to live in and raise their family, to be able to have a job to provide for their kids. Though things, they do things and they're are forced to do things or choose to do things they wouldn't otherwise if they had better options or better resources. So I am a huge fan of looking at the multiple ways that things web together to solve a problem. You can't just say, even though I am in favor of further. Resourcing our police department in a lot of different ways. Community policing works. We've proven it works when we give them the time and energy, the training, it works. Um, so pushing that, but also looking at the Mental Health Crisis Center, I think that is an absolute must that has to be passed and our involvement and. Investment in that as a city. And then making sure people have opportunities. If you're a at a job point, we worked with uh formerly incarcerated. Um, people to help them find work and and remove themselves from a life of crime that they've known before. So you have to look at this all the way, especially around wraparound services with families. Um, in the educational space, so. All of, I could talk forever, but I'll respect the time of it.
All right. Well, we'll give you a chance to.
Yeah.
Both of you two wind up loose ends at the end. Um, Pam has a hand up, but she, I don't see her at her desk, but. Oh, Mary Jo and Al do.
Oh.
Al, Al Tacker here. Um, how do you think the city government is functioning right now, both the elected officials and administration? And what would you change?
Um, Ms. Peppermint.
Oh, yeah, I get on my soapbox about this one. I think it's horrific that it is acceptable. Or has been acceptable for employees of the city to be dressed out in public by city council members. Um, I think that's indicative of what the culture is like at the city. I have talked to many employees, many directors. Um, when we all as candidates had our first meeting with uh Chief Jones. We talked about this specifically, and he said, if you want to know what the culture and the feeling of the city employees are. Stand next to the water cooler on a Tuesday morning and you'll hear. And it doesn't even have to be members of their own department that are getting. Um, overlooked, their work not listened to or looked at. Um, it's not good. You know, we have smart people in place. The role of the council is to direct the city manager. And we have good people that are doing good work. And I'll think a lot of times what's happened is they do the work, it gets sent up to council, and it is completely ignored. And so in my opinion, I feel like there's a culture change that needs to happen within the organization. I'm an organizational health geek. Um, and I've often been heard to say, I have a book about this that you should read. But it's easy to look at it and talk to the employees and see that there there are some challenges. We have two hundred and four minimum open positions right now. We have more directors. Open positions than you would care to know about. We're having a hard time retaining our employees, not just recruiting them. And that's not just the police department, which is an even more difficult place to recruit and and retain. So the, I guess the long-winded answer to your question is to think that the relationship between staff and council is not healthy and. And if I'm voted into office, I will make it one of my top priorities to guide us in a direction that heals that and creates more collaborative spirit.
Well, thank you. Um, all right, Mr. Foster. Sorry.
This is, this is really an interesting question. I've been talking to a lot of people, a lot of voters in the fourth ward. And when I talk to them, I ask them, what is one issue or concern that you have? That rises to the top, something you want to see addressed. Uh, you might guess what the first thing I hear most often is, that's trash. And of course, we need to address that. Uh, I do hear about public safety. But what what amazes me is how often I hear people say, you know what, I really can't think of anything. Um, in a way, I'm sort of dismayed by that because I think that it means that perhaps our electorate, our residents are not as engaged and not as attentive to what's happening in the city as they might be. So that they can be uh informed voters and informed citizens. Um, but I think it does indicate that on the whole from for a lot of people in our community, and again, especially for people in the fourth ward. Uh, trash aside, the city is functioning pretty well, and we have a lot of strengths as a city. And for me, when I look at organizational culture, I look to see where are the strengths? To uh work with those strengths to make them even stronger. And then when we do that, we have a tendency to make those areas that are more challenging stronger as well. I do think there are issues related to how the council operates and how it uh is uh. Directive of the city manager and the staff through the city manager. I do think there's some confusion about that, and we need to address it. I. As I've looked at the council, it makes me think a whole lot about uh boards of directors, and I have worked with a number of boards of directors. Uh, and have always had a good experience. And I think that the reason that I have is because I work well with other people, all kinds of people. And I believe that when the city council is reconstituted, as it will be, we'll have one new member at least, and we'll have a new mayor. And when there are new members of a group, it's reconstituted. We have an opportunity to sort of start fresh, and I look for that opportunity to do exactly that.
Okay, thank you. Um. Right now, my computer says it's uh three minutes after the hour. I think maybe. Uh. We should just end up with the um. Five-minute. Wrap-up. Uh, I'm sorry, Pam, I see your hand all the time. Okay, um, so why don't we give you five minutes to? Just my timer. Five minutes. Uh, each. And last time we started with uh Mr. Foster, so we can end up with Ms. Pepperman. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Leslie. I appreciate it. I really, again, want to thank everybody for including me today. I I love the engagement of this group and um and really glad that this. I'm glad that this race is a nonpartisan race because it allows us to all agree upon things together in in a way that I think is going to be needed as we collaborate and move forward. And oftentimes. What I'm hearing is we all want the same things. You know, we all want a safe city. We all want great schools for our kids. We all want our trash to be handled. That's probably the first thing everybody wants. And uh, we want a public transportation system that works. We want people to be in jobs. These things are all connected. And when I think about what. I want to, well, here's a story. When people first asked me what my platform was when I first started writing, it took me a minute to just say, to pick three things because. I said. Any candidate that's running on an agenda-driven item or three things that they're super passionate about is going to be really disappointed when they get into office and have to make decisions on five hundred and seventy-three things, and most of which are probably really boring. So, um, but it's necessary for our city to have people that are willing to be collaborative. To compromise, to be part of a team-building unified front rather than divisive and agenda-driven. And my deep experience on serving on a dozen different boards. And and teaching organizational health as well at the collegiate level is something that I think has really prepared me for this, as well as having my own business. I am responsible for. Um, fourteen full-time employees here in Columbia, and when I have to work on recruiting and retaining them, I have to get. Creative and innovative sometimes because it's not always money that people want. And they want a good work environment. They want to be happy at work and feel like their work and their voices, it matters and their voice is heard. And so I feel that if you vote for me on April fifth, you're going to get somebody that's dedicated to doing that in a way that is very uh in that spirit. And so, um, while I do have the things I really deeply care about, affordable housing, I deeply care about. Um, people being able to learn as trade skill beyond just a two- and four-year degree is their only options. I feel like they are great options. I think we need a lot of options to make sure that we can. Put people to work and lift them out of poverty, help them lift themselves and their families out of poverty. And um. I just commit whether whether I make it into office or not, I'm going to continue this work. I'm going to continue working on the things that I'm passionate about, but if you elect me to the city council, I'll be able to do it. With a bigger voice. And so I do ask that you vote for me on April fifth. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you. Mr. Foster.
Well, I I said that I hoped that someone would ask me about affordable housing, and so since I didn't get, didn't get the question, I do want to address it because it it really is critical. When I first came to Columbia, one, and when I started it back, one of the first things that I was a part of was the Day Center Task Force. And uh, that group was trying to find a place where those who were unsheltered could come and receive services on a regular basis. Uh, at the time, we had, uh, the only thing that we had was a uh an efficiency apartment that was part of Columbia Public Housing. Thank God we had that, but it was woefully inadequate, and I was really sad when I saw it the first time. Eventually, a turning point took place, really at the initiative of the people in in the church at uh at Wilkes-Burlard. United Methodist Church. They are the ones who took it on and made it happen. Uh, but we have an opportunity now. I mentioned a while ago about. Uh, feeling that we maybe are at something of a turning point, a tipping point in terms of some of the things that can happen in our city. Uh, housing is one of those, and I'm a part of three different groups right now that continues to address that. Uh, upward mobility and affordable affordable housing uh consortium and uh the Housing Justice Team with Columbia Faith Voices. Um, and we all see see things very positively and and are very um excited about what lies ahead. There are opportunities immediately ahead. About an opportunity campus that will provide a center for providing homeless services. There are opportunities ahead immediately about transitional housing that may come online, and then some affordable housing as well. Uh, there are a lot of other things that we need to do in this community, and we need to give attention there. What I would say here again is if we address this as an issue of equity. And if we address it in in a way that meets the needs of those who are especially of low wealth, we will meet the needs of of our community as a whole. What I like to say, and I've said this for many years now, is that when those who struggle, struggle less, we all benefit. And that's reality. When those who are struggling reach a place of stability, then we all have the opportunity to, we we all benefit as a result of that. Um, so as we look for, uh, look on uh forward, one of the things I I hope to see also is that we do more in outreach and receiving input from our citizens. Uh, this is something that DeCarlin Seawood has said he wants to give attention to, and I think it's desperately needed. We need to have a more robust uh uh system for receiving input from our from our residents. In order to know what's best, because we need to be in proximity to those who's. Who uh are going to, going to be mostly affected by the decisions we make and by the services we provide or fail to provide. And when we hear from them, we're going to hear from the very people who can tell us best what their needs are. So that's something that I I hope to see as well. Uh, I've been in leadership positions now for forty years. I want to bring that experience uh to bear on the city council here. Um, as I said, I'm a person who works well across the spectrum of people from all different kinds of backgrounds. And um, I want to bring that as well. I believe we have an opportunity now as a city to move forward in several very important ways, in mental health, in housing, in public safety. Um, and in addressing climate, and I want to bring my efforts, my concerns to that effort as well, and call on others to join in in making these things happen in a way. That moves us forward and progresses us as a city. Thanks very much. Again, good to be with you all.
Thank you very much. Well, that, I guess my moderating is over, and I turn it back over to David.
All right. Thank you very much, Leslie.